All right, and you'll see me here, but I'm going to turn off my video and just go straight into the screen chair. And hopefully, everybody will be able to see that.
Yes.
And we're, and we're gonna have a short pre PowerPoint, but it'll be quick because I know everyone wants to just talk about the maps. And again, as was noted, this is kind of a pivot point in the process where before everything was abstracted, now we're going to be looking at actual plans. And second, before the goal really wasn't to reach consensus. So, you know, different council members had different ideas last time, and that was fine. And that's why you're seeing now different options. But this is that opportunity now to start narrowing those down. Now, that does not mean your, the goal tonight is to land this. There may be areas where there are still open items, so still discussion that you want to have as a body. Or there are things where something is close, but not quite right. And that's perfectly fine, because again, you're not limited to the plans presented this evening. And you're certainly not trying to select a plan this evening. And indeed, the, the schedule assumes that there may be refinements out of tonight, and that you would get refined maps before the next meeting. And as a reminder, at that next meeting in March, if we have a play, a refined map that isn't quite there still, we can go through the live line drawing process there where we'll move those final blocks around with the goal of landing that map by March 22nd, knowing you have an April 17 deadline for adoption, which is part of the reason of going through the process of allowing that to be done by resolution to allow as much time as possible for this process to allow as much time for public feedback as possible. As a reminder, for any maps that are produced this evening, the goal is to have those out at least seven days in advance that March 22nd hearing. As a practical matter, we're going to try to get them up as soon as possible, again, to allow as much time for the public to give you feedback. These are the criteria that are spelled out in state law. I'm not going to belabor them because I think you're all starting to becoming experts on this stuff. I will say, though, that these are things to think about as you're looking at plans and providing feedback. It's bringing it back to those criteria. So, I really like this plan because it did a good job of using understandable boundaries in X. Or I didn't like that plan as much because it split a community of interest in Y. So it gives you that foundation. And then, just as a reminder, that in looking at these, it does appear the city may have some Federal Voting Rights Act issues, particularly as remain relates to making sure that the voting rights of the API community in the eastern half of the city are protected. I will note that all of the plans I put together, race was not used as the predominant factor. But those lines were reviewed by outside counsel, and if there are additional questions, we can talk about those as we go through. As was noted first, I'm only going to present the five plans that I put together based on your prior direction. Though I do have the other plans loaded in the system, that also includes the two plans that that were late and were added. And so I do have those available now in the system. They just weren't in the system when we put out all the materials for this meeting. And then, just as a reminder, most of the direction last time looked at a couple of things, which are, one, how to require some of the balances, the population balance where some of your districts were out of balance, and so you needed to get to that equal population requirement. There were those handful of census blocks that were split where we needed to resolve those. There's discussion about looking at future population growth. And there were some specific communities of interest identified, center ground HOAs, the Gale Ranch area and Windermere. And with that, I'm going to switch over here to the interactive software, which hopefully will be popping up here shortly for you. And again, as a reminder, this is software where we can turn on and off different layers as we go through the discussion. And as, as an example, that one thing I do want to remind you about is that split block issue because it's something we really didn't talk about a lot at hearing number two, but actually did play a role in the process of drawing these lines. So I do want to remind you about it. So you know where that's in play. So these are your existing district boundaries after the annexes that have been completed. And these are the census blocks. And there are the three census blocks that are highlighted, blue, purple, and red. And as you can see, those are split by multiple districts. And in the case of the red block is actually split into three different districts currently. And because that's the geography we get from the census, those areas need to be kept whole. So that's an area where we have to make changes. I'll say the blue block was generally pretty easy to resolve by kind of making El Costa the boundary between District One and District Four. But the purple and the red block, because they're kind of in that confluence of three different districts, it does have an impact as far as what you do with those. And it was an area we didn't have really a lot of direction at the, at the second hearing. And so it is an area that, as you look at these plans, what you like, what you don't, thinking about, is there better, is there additional clarifying a direction in that ish area? With that, I'll turn those blocks off and hop straight into the green plan. And as I wrote on the green plan, one of the goals here was kind of minimize the number of changes. Kind of do that, you know, as close to your existing districts as possible. So I'm going to overlay here your existing districts and the green, whoops, the existing districts with the annex, there we go, and the green plan. So you can kind of see where those changes were. And you see the bulk of the changes were in those areas where those census blocks had to be resolved. Where again, you see that shift to use Al Costa as the dividing line. And you see the, the Coyote Creek basically is established as the dividing line between districts two and three. And I'm going to turn off.
Question, what are those census blocks? Like, what does it mean?
Sure. I apologize. So census blocks, I'm going to turn off these districts again and bring them back up. So the census is a head count of every single person. So they go around and count every single person. But they don't report the census with three people lived in this household and two people lived in that household. Rather, they aggregate data to what are called census blocks. And those sometimes correspond to actual city blocks, and sometimes they don't. So if you look at this map, those green lines, those are the census blocks that the, that the federal government uses to report the results of the US Census. And they are the smallest level of geography we have. So there's no way to know if they say there are 500 people who live in this block, how many live, them live in the north half versus the south half. So if you recall, equal population was our most important criterion. And therefore, you kind of have to keep census blocks, particularly populated census blocks whole, because otherwise you have no idea how many people live on which side of the line. Did that answer the question?
Okay.
I, I had a question on that, too. I mean, I, I got the census block thing, the green, the green blocks. But can you, again, explain the blue, the purple, and the red? Why, why we have to keep those together, or whatever you said about those?
Yeah, that was my question.
So you have to keep all of those census blocks whole. The problem that we have is your existing district boundaries. Oops, I'm going to put them on with the annex are actually splitting three of those census blocks. And so, and the reason for that is, and it's kind of a quirk, is the Census Bureau actually has a program called the Block Boundary Suggestion Project, where local governments are able to tell the federal government, or suggest, not tell to the local, to the federal government, hey, these are the places those census blocks should go to, for example, not screw up our district boundaries. And to give us that flexibility. The problem with that program is it is generally run in the sixth year. So that program was going on in 2016, which had a little problem in that you didn't know you were even going to have district boundaries, let alone where they were going to be when this was going on. And so this is something that really won't be an issue when you're redistricting 2031. But where you're redistricting now, these are, those three census blocks that I highlighted are areas where even if you love your existing district boundaries, think they're perfect, you have to make some changes to conform to that federal geography we inherited from the federal government. It's something we talked about way back during hearing one. Didn't really talk about it hearing two. It ended up actually influencing some of these lines. Because again, when I started drawing, they, particularly these two are kind of at the confluence of multiple districts. So I wanted to reorient you to that issue because if you were wondering, why was I drawing a line in some of these areas? And what was that little finger? Remember those census blocks is probably one of those census blocks if you're looking in that area. Did that answer the question?
Yeah. I gotta tell you, I'm looking at the thing and great, the, I don't know what color you call it, salmon or whatever. That's open space.
Yeah.
I mean, but okay, yeah, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll make that one work.
So again, you might, that red one, you might be, I'm putting on the satellite imagery, and you can actually see it's grabbing houses on the backside of the street there, and it's grabbing some houses up here. So it actually isn't, there's a lot of open space in between, which is the problem here is the Census Bureau normally would try to keep those in separate geographies, but they didn't in this case. And so it's forcing some communities that may not on the natural, you think to put together, you're, you're kind of being forced to put together.
Yeah, I, I, what I'm saying is I'm looking at that, and it doesn't seem to me that it's going to be that tough when we get down to clarifying questions, which we jumped on ahead of time. Anyway, anyone else before Michael continues? Go ahead, Michael.
Great. And now it's that technical issue. So now we just get to what do the lines do? And going back again to that green plan. And I'm going to turn off the boundaries here of your, or leave on your existing, whoops, I keep clicking the wrong thing. The existing boundaries here, and you see there's those handful of changes to conform to the census geography. And then the big issue, if you recall, in your existing boundaries is that District Four is overpopulated. Uh, or I'm sorry, underpopulated and District Three is overpopulated. So District Three has too much and District Four has too little. And this green plan resolves that by adding in this area right in here. And, and that's the big population shift is right in that area. And that was done in parts to move portions of the Bridges HOA, particularly the areas that are north of Bullinger into a common district. So I'm going to turn on the green boundary without the coloring and turn on those HOAs, which were prioritized at the last meeting. And there you can see that Bridges HOA and how we're not able to unify all of it, but unify much more of it in District Four. Now, I will note that the green plan does not try to unify all of HOAs. It's just trying to make the minimum amount of changes possible because that was one of the options that was discussed at the last meeting. I'm going to zoom back out here and turn off those HOAs and bring back up the, now I'm going to bring up the blue plan. And overlay again those existing district boundaries. I will note that the changes made in here are basically identical as to how you're solving those split blocks. So the action really isn't in these areas. The action is between District Three and Four, where again, District Four needs to add something that's currently in District Three. In the green plan, it was adding from the west. In the blue plan, it's adding from the east. And what you see there is that it's basically kind of smoothing out that boundary there. And using Bullinger and Branch as the dividing lines, it's moving this little area back into three to kind of again, smooth out that boundary. So you have that understandable boundary there of Bullinger and Branch between those two districts. And that is kind of the logic of the blue plan. So blue and green are very similar in that they are, how do you move the fewest number of people to split the, fix the census blocks and get those population deviations? And that's kind of all they do. The purple plan and the red plan kind of go a step further and are a bit of a pivot. In that what they do, and I'm just going to let blue stand for a moment there, is they do focus a little bit more on some of those communities of interest air issues that were identified, even if they do trigger more significant changes to the existing boundaries. And in particular, in the eastern portion of the city, when you're talking about Gale Ranch and Windermere, and I'm going to highlight those two areas briefly because they really do flavor the purple and the red plan. And one thing that I will note there is that the areas highlighted there are, the areas in blue are anywhere that the subdivision name mentioned Gale Ranch. Now, I was unclear at the last meeting whether all of that is when you said, when somebody said Gale Ranch, did they mean all that? Or did they mean a smaller area? So that is again, a place of potential clarification. And second, the goal was to try to keep those areas as whole as possible. And, and that ended up being challenging for two reasons. One is that they're just really big. So for example, the, the Windermere area is, that area highlighted in red and the areas kind of surrounded by them are 82% of the population of a district. So they're almost a district size. And as you can see, if they needed to add a little bit more, there's really nowhere to go without running into Gale Ranch. So it kind of forces you to split Gale Ranch to a certain degree because they're just physically in the way of each other. The other issue that comes up is the issue of packing, which this is something we talked about the first meeting, which is an area where if you put all of an area into one district, you run the risk of vote dilution where an area is only able to elect in one district where if they're drawn into two districts, they actually have the ability to elect and influence the election in two districts. And that's particularly concerning when you look at Federal Voting Rights Act issues. Because when you look at this, again, this Windermere area, it's almost, it's more than 70% Asian. So it is, is a challenge there. So what I did with the purple and the red plans is not necessarily try to keep both of those whole, but try to keep them more whole and also try to divide them in ways that might be a little bit easier for the communities to understand. So with that, I can turn off those two layers and turn on the purple plan. And what you see there is now the line between districts three and four is much different from those existing boundaries. Because what you see there is, again, similar shifts with districts one and two, not a lot of difference from those previous plans. The only really big change that you see is particularly in District One. When I zoom in there and we turn on the purple plan and we turn on those HOAs. You can see now those HOAs that were being split, where the kind of some of those HOAs along Canyon View are being split. They've now all been united under District One. So that was again, a place where there was direction to try to look at those issues, try to keep more HOAs whole. So you see that larger shift than you saw in the previous plans, where it's a bigger change, but trying to reflect more communities of interest. And then if you zoom back out, you can see now, again, those HOAs trying to be respected, trying to use that understandable boundary where basically you're using Bullinger over to Windermere as the dividing line between districts three and four the whole way through on that purple plan. So again, you're, you're, that's kind of the, the logic that's being used there in, again, the purple plan. The other thing I will just note here is that that when you look at District Two, this is one place where that split block comes in, because if you're asking what that finger kind of up there was, that's that census block that we were talking about earlier. And so that is a place where that's the reason this is kind of going that way. And there are alternative options to deal with that. And that's why you're going to see those in some of the, the other plans. That I'm going to turn off the purple plan and move on to the red plan. And in the red plan, I'll note District Four is identical. So District Four in the purple plan and the red plan are identical. What this, the chain is really starting District Three, where you see what's happening here is that split block we talked about earlier. Again, highlighted in red, where before that split block we were putting in District Two, we're now adding it to District Three. And because when I showed earlier and we were saying that was kind of an empty area, if you recall, and I put up the satellite imagery, there are actually a bunch of houses there on the back end of that area. If I put up the the HOAs briefly here, and I know we're kind of bouncing around through layers.
Deer Ridge and Royal.
Yeah, you're splitting Deer Ridge and Royal Ridge there with those exit, that block. So to try to keep those whole, using the limitations we're stuck with, you see this kind of larger shift of District Three to the west. What does that do? Now District Three has added that population, but it means that District Two is now underpopulated. You've taken stuff out of District Two, and so it has to go add somewhere. So what you see there is, and I'm going to turn off these HOAs again. And this is an area, by the by, it was a little challenging because there aren't necessarily a ton of HOAs. This is an area that does not have as many of those. So if I turn those off, I'm just looking at my notes because I lost my place. Bear with me one moment. First, you see it moving, and I'm going to overlap those existing boundaries again. You see it adds in this little slice here, moving up to and then there's this weird area there. And if you're wondering, why is that? Again, this is a place where we just unfortunately inherited a challenge from our friends in DC in that, that's a census block that I just highlighted in red. I don't know why they did that. It's something certainly to suggest they not do next time, but it kind of forms a wall there, right? It's a dam that kind of makes it hard to shift population. That's why you got this kind of finger area there. It's not, again, trying to grab somebody's house, or I don't know who lives there, anything like that. It's literally, it's just this census block, but you can't move north this way without grabbing this whole area. So that's where it just becomes the census geography kind of triggered what you're seeing there. But fundamentally.
Michael, one quick question. So the block, census block, if we, in next election, for example, when is the next one after 10, like during next census, they are going to review this census block? Or do we need to appeal on that one? How, how that works?
So the Block Boundary Suggestion Program, again, generally starts in the sixth year. So it'll be coming in 2026, where you'll be able to have that process to suggest better census geography for your city, which will be able to mean you have a lot more flexibility come 2031. Unfortunately, it just, we're kind of stuck here for the current redistricting.
Okay. Michael, why would you do it if it's, if there's no housing for the most part? The census is Chevron. I, I guess you have that little, now that's off of Monona Dale. That's just open space for, I mean, what you have is Inverness Park, the little gray thing there, I think is the school. Scott, chime in, isn't that where Elizabeth works?
You, you do have some housing there, the, around the outside of Ascot. And there's housing there.
You've got housing on the backside of the street, and then you've got all this housing over here. This is all one census block.
Yeah, and you got Athan Downs and the people who live next to Athan Downs, and then the perimeter at Ascot. So it's kind of weird, to say the least.
Yes, there are definitely some places in the city are like, I don't really know what you are doing.
So just to follow up on my question, so in future, in, let's say, 2036, whatever, the next census block that they are going to redesign is like, do, do, do they expect city to give them the feedback? Or do they have their own way of doing it? How that works?
So the federal government does this, and they make those ultimate decisions. But again, they do have a specific program whose specific purpose is for local governments to be able to weigh in and say, don't draw a line there because that's dumb. And so that's the program that unfortunately, San Ramon didn't know to prioritize, didn't, couldn't say, here's our existing district boundaries. Don't run a census block through them because in 2016, you didn't know you were going to have district elections, let alone what your district boundaries were going to be. So this is kind of apologize for the colloquialism. This is kind of the hangover from the CVRA conversion. And it'll, if that makes sense.
Okay, hopefully that will go away next time.
So really what's happening here again is District Four is staying the same. We made the decision to move District Three further to the west, which pushed District Two further to the north into, into District One, which again, is now adding this area around Canyon View Circle to unite some of those HOAs in that area. And then I'm going to turn this off here. And that'll bring us.
In that process, you, you split up where that big bulge was. Those people are, well, I don't know that they have an active HOA that is a community called Inverness Park. And so you, you've, you know, created one area and you've cut up another. So that, that doesn't, to me, that doesn't solve anything.
And I want to make, and I usually say this on the front end, but I think I forgot today, there's going to be plans you see where you're like, eh, nope, throw it in the garbage. That was interesting. And that's perfectly fine. That's assumed, quite frankly, in this process. And sometimes it's seen trade offs that, oh, well, if we moved, if we didn't like that finger up here, what is it triggered down there? And those are, and those are the decisions that you are going to have to confront and why you're seeing some of these different plans and trade offs. And there is an HOA that is in fact being split. You can see the boundaries there where it is, it is occurring. So with that, I'm going to turn off again that HOA and bring us now to the orange plan. And the orange plan makes some different decisions here in that it's kind of moving, solving that same problem we had here where all those split census blocks were, but it's doing in the opposite direction. So instead of moving District Three further to the west, you can see District Three is basically stopping along Doerty. And then what you see there is now District Two is keeping all of this area that was added during the annex. That's kind of to the west of Doerty. And now this area that we were just talking about in Canyon View Circle is being united and drawn into District Two to the south. What that does, though, is then leaves District One leaves District Two overpopulated. So now District One is moving in the opposite direction, right? So now you're seeing District One, if we overlay those existing boundaries, moving south into this area. This was something we did not talk about significantly. So I had to make some decisions about how to do that. And what I'm going to do here is I'm going to turn on the orange plan without any color. And I, what I did is I went back to some direction from the original CVRA conversion and looked at the height, the elementary school enrollment zones. And what you see there is trying to more closely follow those with the Bullinger being now, because we went further north, being united in District Two. And then this is the, I'm blinking on the name. The, the Montevideo, that's why I always forget that one. Enrollment Zone is now largely united into District One. So that's again, a different way of kind of solving this problem that we're having here. The other thing this allows for, which is different from the prior plans, is that we are now, because District Three is now lost this area that, or does not include any of this area that to the west of Doerty, it now is expanding into District Four. And instead of having that kind of tail that's following down along Windermere, it's kind of evening off that shape there and putting most of that area into District Three again, just because it's been an ongoing theme. One of the, this is, if you're wondering, these handful of blocks right there, that's a census block. You can notice how it kind of is blocking off those handful of census blocks. Again, I can't really tell you. And yes, there are some houses up here that are being hitting those houses down there. So I, I can't tell you. So that's why that shape there's, there's that's that little divot again. It's not about anything in particular, other than adjusting to that census data. So again, several different plans. The first two plans, both blue and green are kind of, again, to kind of make those minimum changes. One in the east and one in the west. With then the purple, the red, and now the orange plan, all trying to create more understandable boundaries in the eastern portion of the city, even when that means moving more people between districts. And then reflecting different solutions about what to do in kind of this canyon, I think it's called Canyon Circle area. Canyon View Circle. Canyon View Circle area and kind of what to do in there. So with that, I can just stop talking. And I'll just note that this is the software we have available. So Mr. Mayor, as you take public comment, as you have debate and discussion tonight, I can have this up or have it down or turn it on and off based at your direction discretion. And again, now I can stop talking, answer questions.